We can continue with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then our call.
Commissioner Caddell, is absent?
Who?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just made it here.
Commissioner Mayor.
Here.
Commissioner Schwab is absent. Commissioner Juarez.
Here.
Commissioner Salzio is absent. Commissioner Hall.
Yes, here.
Chairman Lee.
Yes. Okay, and moving on to look at the agenda and proof.
Will we do it as some people?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Well, yes, will someone motion to excuse?
Motion to ask some excuse people, send them. All three of them?
All those in favor of that motion?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? I'm saying, motion passed. And then to move it out to the agenda?
One suggestion on the agenda, if it's okay, I think we have another person coming, but if it's okay, wouldn't it get to that point if you wouldn't mind bumping a site plan review up? I'm sure the good folks from Wolf Chiropractic would love to hear our mixed-use zoning conversation, but maybe not all of it, and so to respect their time, when they're ready to go, maybe we could move to that item and then come back to our mixed-use discussion.
I think we're there.
I think we're there, yeah. So maybe if you wouldn't mind just switching to business and old business around.
Okay, so move that, including that change?
Motion to move that?
In a second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion passes, agenda is approved. And we'll move it on to the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. I didn't see anything standing out that was.
I will look for approval of the minutes for the April 14th meeting.
I'll support it.
All those in favor?
Yes.
And any opposed? First eight. And the minutes are approved. And moving on to public comments concerning items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we can move on now to the site plan review, is that correct, Mark?
Uh, yeah, uh, yes. I was reading it, you did public comment?
I did. There was a flurry.
Yes, and I'll start with it, maybe Andy will jump in, and the advocate is here as well, I think they could jump in as soon as, as soon as they're ready. Basically, we have Wolf Chiropractic, which has purchased a building at 1425, is that it, West Main Street? Has some, I think, just minor changes that they want to make. And I'm gonna say unfortunately, those zoning ordinance requires that the use is changing and they've got to do a site plan and we've got to go through a state kind of review process, and even if the changes are fairly minor, almost still have to go through that process, and so that's why we're here tonight. Andy did put together a memo for you and had reviewed the plan, has some recommendations for you, those are listed in page three of his memo. And Andy, if you wanna maybe just cover that a little bit, and then that and the advocate can cover what they want to say.
Yeah, sure. The, the, the building that I'm occupying is a former bank with a drive-through building right on the corner of, that was just Main Street. And from what I understand and from the site plan, they're not proposing any, you know, they're not tearing anything down of that building, I mean, I think we're talking about some modification of the signage, and most of the other work is gonna be done inside the building. So, you know, a lot of the, of the provisions, obviously, excuse me, that are already met, or, you know, maybe, you know, a few things that I need to, to review to make sure that that they aren't supplying. The use that they're proposing is obviously a, a permitted use in that district, so they don't have any, any concerns there. They actually don't need a lot coverage requirement, and ordinance, it requires a maximum 60% lot, lot coverage, but they're not changing anything, they're not making that, that particular aspect of it anymore, not conforming that it already is, and so past practice has ventured to simply allow that for now. Parking wise, they're fine. If the ordinance requires, well, them to only have about five spaces, and they have, you know, at least 13 on site. The sign, no, I, I, I don't know if the signs that they proposed on there, and they can speak to that a little bit, if that's, you know, scaled and everything that they're actually planning on doing, but the way it's shown on the site plan, it does meet the ordinance, and, you know, when they do, if and when they decide to put a sign up on the front. All they've gotta do is, is, you know, submit, submit the permit information, and then, you know, we can work with Sue to make sure that whatever they're, they're proposing fits within those criteria, we're talking 50 square feet, I think is the maximum for the wall sign they can have. So I don't, I don't anticipate that being, maybe, common. I spent a little bit of time looking at the landscaping, is, is what's shown on the site plan. In the C2 district, they require one canopy tree and three shrubs for each 20 feet of front end, and so by my math, that were somewhere around 18 trees and, I don't know. It, it requires somewhere around 18 trees and 52 shrubs. I did go out there just before the, the meeting, I counted all the trees, I counted 19. It's different from what's shown on, on the site plan, but again, there are already enough trees there, and then, I, I didn't count the shrubs, but there's a lot of them, and, you know, again, I think that, that the planning permission declined it, that the intent of that requirement's been met. There are some, some light poles on the site, there are a couple right up front of the, you know, the front door of, of the building, and it, it looks like those, the light fixtures themselves are an angle, and typically we'd like to see those facing directly down, so there's not lights, you know, spilling into the road or spilling onto it, onto it, it isn't property. If those can be adjusted, I'm not sure that they can, but I, I think they can. But if, you know, we, I always, always wanna see the lights, you know, facing straight down and being fully cut off on any kind of commercial site plan. And then the last thing was the dumpster enclosure on the site, now there's a dumpster on the, the north side of the property, it, it's not enclosed, and for most of the, of the commercial businesses that we reviewed in the city, we always ask for, you know, some sort of like opaque fence around the dumpster with a gate lock and everything. So those were the only issues that, that jumped out at me, and so, if you'll see at the end of my report, I am recommending approval, you know, with, with a few conditions, some of those being the same conditions that we put on, you know, that we put on all of our recommendations, and then again, with the lighting fixtures, and, you know, just being adjusted so they're downward facing, the dumpster being enclosed in some kind of fence, and then the last thing is just if and when they do decide to place a wall sign or, or a freestanding sign, that we'll take a look at and make sure that it meets the requirements of the ordinance.
Okay. Is there someone here from Wolf Chiropractic that would like to introduce this?
Oh, I, can I speak to?
You just speak at the microphone, thank you.
You know, the comments he made, like, as he said, he covered, covered most everything that we're planning on doing, we're not really changing the exterior of the building as it stands from seven, from 2007, when they reconstructed it. He spoke to the, the, the lights not being downward facing, and I, I think that the lights he's speaking of are actually, they spot, I hope you've ever been by there at night when it's lit up, but the wall, the wall sign's not electrified, it's, it's spotlit with the, there, there's downward facing lamps there, and then there's fixed lights that are on the building, now I don't think they're adjustable, so would that be, become an issue at that point? Because it's, I mean, if they're on a timer and, and they're from set hour to set hour, I didn't read into that very much, but I just know that that's what those were there for, and the other stuff I think should be, should be buying as far as the enclosure for, you know, if you need an enclosure around that dumpster area, that shouldn't be an issue, and then we planned on submitting permits for the wall sign, and that was pretty much the scale, I think it's gonna be, I think there's room for 21 feet, and he said we have room for 50 square feet, and then they're 18-inch letters, that's all, that's all that will fit, so by my math, that's over 50 square feet, so we will submit that paperwork as well, so. I guess he'll be up here as well as the lighting.
And I'm sorry, for the record, does he need to state his name?
Oh. Jim, uh, Jim Chisholm, from Wolf Family Chiropractic.
Thank you. Anything about the light, do you know now, or?
Um, looking right now, I think, I mean, the idea is that, is that, you know, the lights are, you know, downward, downward facing, so that they don't want to spill onto adjacent property, to, we're trying to, you know, somewhat protect the, the, the night sky. I don't see anything here that, that allows, actually.
It's kinda like an accent lighting or something?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure, let me take a look real quick, I'm trying to find where it talks about, you know, light assigned, typically there are lots of lighted signs everywhere, obviously, and so, I have to, I, I, I don't know what the lights look like, did he mention, maybe I took that wrong, they're actually facing them, building, I thought they were facing out into the parking lot.
They're facing the sign?
They're facing the sign, and actually the way that building's angled, that lot's 1.4 acres, so it's actually, it's still, I mean, if you go beyond that, it's still on that L-shaped block, because it goes into, I mean, maybe beyond that, if you go beyond Jane Ellen, because that lot actually goes to Jane Ellen, I mean, if they're facing, you know, because it's an angled bu- building, it's pointing into, still into the same piece of property, but I don't think it's facing the apartment center directly behind it or anything like that.
But also, the lighting. The lighting was obviously put in for bank security. Chiropractic security is probably not an issue, so those light fixtures, it may be, a problem could be terminated. If they are a problem.
And the only problem is shining on other properties?
And what, what?
In this guy?
Yeah, I mean, the ordinance, yeah, I mean, the ordinance, um, let me see here, it does say, you know, lighting intended to illuminate a site, facade, or parking area is subject to the, to the regulations, and that one of the, of the regulations says that light fixture assemblies shall have a 100% cutoff above the horizontal plane at the lowest part of, of the light source. So basically, it's talking about, you know, you've got, there, there's gotta be something that, that cuts it off and focuses the light down. You know, I'm not sure how that works on, on, on facade, on facade lighting, I think typically this is looking at those wall pack style lights that actually mounted on to the side of the building instead of something that's, you know, away from the building and shining at it, but, you know, again, it's, it looks like that, you know, based on my, my quick reading of this note, that I don't, I don't think that would comply with, with what the ordinance does.
Is the ordinance changed since, like, it says 2007?
I, you know.
Just a lighting.
Yeah.
Lighting ordinance changed.
We just changed it.
Signs, we didn't change.
Yeah, we can change, change things. I'm not sure about lighting.
What about, Andy, what about general standards, E, direct lighting and directly reflected from lighting should be confined to subject property by screening, shielding, landscaping, other measures such no lighting in excess of one half-foot candle shall be cast on adjoining property. And what I'm getting at, and I don't know that, I'm guessing that the situation is that the light is shining right on the building, and so it's not going past the building to adjoining property, and so if it is just shining right on the building, perhaps?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to, I mean, I don't, I don't have a, a, a big problem with it, and I think you wanna know that the light, you know, the light fixture assembly with 100% cutoff is generally tied to a well, right now, if you already have a 15 or 20-foot pole that's facing down.
Facing right down.
Yeah, and I mean, in this case also, they don't, they're not, again, they're not changing, you know, the lighting, they're not changing.
It's been existing.
Anything on, on the building, it's, it's an existing condition. So again, I don't, I, I don't have a big problem with it, but.
Well, I was saying, add it.
Well, yeah, and I think, you know, as long as, as, as long as they're not spilling onto adjacent property, they're beating that half-foot candle stand, I think it would be all right.
It's the, yes, it's, it's 4.4. That's something they could measure, so.
Any other questions? You have notes, Jim, you're good? I saw you appear to be right. Yeah, are we ready for our motion?
Motion to approve it with the recommended recommendations.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion passes? And if it's a good use, none.
Oh, four of you agree with me?
Yes.
I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. And then back to old business, review of mixed-use zoning.
This is all Andy. All right, let me, let me get organized here real quick.
And I got your email, Tom, but.
I was just copying.
Okay, okay. All right.
All right, um, I have provided to you guys the draft map, and again, this is a map is only in draft form, it's not, by, by any means, so we are free to revise that mixed-use boundary as necessary, and I, I already know there's one change that I had to make to it, which we'll get to momentarily. But first, I wanna sort of jump into some of the language that I have written in the ordinance here, and specifically, you know, I wrote this, the mixed-use district standards is Article 16A, and I wanna walk through a little bit about what I'm thinking about as far as what the, the use is permitted by right, and the, and the special land uses are going to be, you know, the, the very first one, and one of the most important things that we're doing here is, is permitting something called a mixed-use development, which could consist of one building, multiple buildings, that has, it's, it's used for a variety of different land uses, so it might be, you know, a, a residential component to the, to the development, it might be an office component, there might be a, a retail component, and I think it's important to, to explicitly permit those kinds of buildings, so we don't get into that, that issue in zoning that you, that you sometimes run into where you have somebody that has multiple principal uses on, on, on property, and, and most of the ordinances, including yours, have a provision there that says, you know, there shall not be a, the, the one parcel that has the multiple principal buildings or principal uses on it. So this allows that kind of mixed-use development with, with more than one use, as long as it's kind of part of a more cohesive project. I've also included in here as uses by right, a lot of the stuff that's also allowed in C2, so we have retail stores, drugstore galleries, restaurants, without drive-through, personal service establishments, so again, that would get into, you know, barber shops, dry cleaners, federal traffic offices, and, and a bunch of other stuff. One thing that I do want to draw your attention to is, under uses permitted by right, I have items G, H, and I, which are primarily all office-type uses, right, so we have office holdings board, executive, administrative, professional accounting, and so on, we have medical and dental offices, and we also have banks, credit union, saving and loan association, and other things. For each of those three, you know, sort of groups of land uses, notice that those are permitted by right, only when located on the second or third story of a mixed-use development, or we can either just include building in general in, in, in that provision, and that is in there intentionally, and we'll, and I think we'll talk about why in a minute. Multiple family dwelling, so again, condos, any kind of attached housing, I think makes sense in that district, and then also, you know, the accessory buildings and outdoor merchandise display, which are both things that are permitted in the C2 district, and so it makes sense to continue that, you know, as, as far as the permitted uses in mixed-use since we're adjacent to the downtown. And then in 16A dot O3, I have special land uses, and so these are the things where a public hearing would be required, where the advocate would come in, there would be hearing in the site plan and, and all of that, and there'd be a little bit more process, and, and it's a little bit more of a discretionary decision by the planning permission to allow these things, because the impact can often be, be much greater, so that's why we've got theaters, concert halls, or similar places of public assembly, private clubs, hotels, hotels, single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings. And then again, notice F, G, and H, much like those three items that we talked about in, or that I talked about in, in the section of uses permitted by right, we have those same office kind of uses located on the ground floor as a, as a special land use, so what I'm doing here is that I'm making it easier for those office, office-type uses to be located on the second or third floor than I am on the ground floor. Getting into the site development requirements, again, this is formatted pretty much the same as the C2, just so it's consistent. You'll see there are a few of those kind of form-based standards that we talked about a couple months ago, where we have no off-road parking in the front yard, buildings having a primary entrance facing this, facing a public sidewalk, so again, the front door's gotta be in the front. And then I also have this item C here, where it says a minimum of 50% of the street-facing facade between 2 and 8 feet above ground shall be comprised of clear windows that allow use of indoor space or product display areas along Main Street, Monroe, Washington, or the river. And again, that's, that's written in here so, so we don't have, you know, long blank expanses of just concrete or, you know, or siding, or, or whatever, you know, talking about walkability and making things comfortable and interesting for, for pedestrians. It's really important that there be windows along the ground floor, and people can see inside and, and, and look at stuff, it really enhances that kind of pedestrian experience. And then as far as the dimensional standards, most of these are the same as what's in the C2 right now, except that you will see I have included both a minimum and a maximum front yard setback, so, and, and the minimum is, 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 is zero feet, so they can build right out to, to, to the front lot line, but the most they could setback under, under whatever it hears 10 feet, so if they wanna have something that's 30 feet off the road, they can't do it. It's gotta be 10 feet, and, and so again, that, that, bringing that, that closer to the road provides the, well, one, it eliminates the front yard parking issue, but then two, it also, again, enhances the walkability and having, you know, having things close to the road makes it, you know, you walk down the sidewalk, you don't, you're not walking by big empty spaces that are uncomfortable to walk in, you're not walking by, you know, parking lots or just empty spaces, you're walking by buildings with windows and stuff in them that, that you can look at. The rest of the setbacks, I kept the same requirements as what's in your C2 district now, so again, there's not much of a side yard requirement, or a rear yard requirement, really, unless you're abutting a, you know, presidential district, you're use, we have a 40 station tail rotor board there, but I, you know, maximum lot covered would be 100%, so they can use as much or as little of the lot, because they want to, no block area lot width requirement. And then we also have this, this minimum building frontage requirement, this is kind of a, an odd concept to grasp, and in the, in the definitions, on, on the very first page, I tried to explain this a little bit, and so, gee, I have the graphic there on the front page, it illustrates the, the maximum and minimum front yard setback, you guys will have that, like this. And so what the frontage is, and again, it, it's written kinda weird, but it says a percentage expressed as the, as the width of that part of the building wall which faces the street and occupies the build-two zone divided by the lot width, so if you look at that graphic below, the frontage is, is then, is the distance, you know, however many feet that building occupies from the left over to the right, and then you divide that by the total lot width, so in, in this graphic that I have here, the building frontage would be something like probably 80 or, or 90%, because you're seeing the front of that building occupies almost the entire width of the lot, and that's what we want, is a nice high number like that, again, so we don't have, you know, those uncomfortable empty spaces in the front yard where, where, where we want, you know, on our main street, and in those areas to have kind of a sense of enclosures, you're locked down, you want that nice long consistent street wall with, with windows, and this really helps to accomplish that. You know, a, a, a lot of the other stuff that I have written in this amendment is just sort of a lot of the nuts and bolts you have to clean up when you add an entirely new zoning district, but the real need of this thing is in, is in this mixed-use district language that I've written, so I guess now I'll, I'll turn it back over to you, Chairman Hammond, and if you guys have questions or comments, just let me know, okay? We can work through any issues that we have.
I'll start, mixed use, and I'll admit, my wife and I argued about this one, but I believe that should be heightened.
I've seen it go, please.
So have I, but I actually get a vote on Google, and there's more heightened than that.
Okay, fair enough.
For what it's worth.
Which side was your wife on?
Uh, she was not heightened.
I thought that usually was.
Yeah, well, that's why she's not here, she's actually here.
Well, I had a question about the width, I'm concerned where there's no minimum lot width about spaces in between buildings, right? Is that what I even see on this picture here, and you could make your building and then?
You're gonna have little alleyways between?
Yeah, I'd rather see them all kind of connected.
Right, um, I would too, and I'm also, there's a, there's a couple things also that I'm, that I'm thinking about with this stuff, is one, I don't wanna create a bunch of non-conforming buildings, most of them, I think, along Main Street in particular, meet that criteria, but I think that the farther you get east, there are more that don't, I think that's something that, that we can look at, because you're right, I would like to have as much of that frontage occupied with buildings as possible. If there's a little driveway here or there, maybe not to end the world, but I would agree that, you know, to the extent that we can have a solid street wall going all the way along in front of all those buildings, and, and up and along that whole street front edge, that would be beneficial.
But then again, those are single-family homes, or, or at one time, so.
Yeah, they feel like grandfathered in, like, right?
Oh, use changes.
Yeah.
Tell the use changes.
And they would, they would become.
They may not force to.
They're not performing structure for building it.
Or they need a variance. I mean, when, one of the challenges of, of, of writing this kind of language and potentially changing the zoning of properties, you're changing some of the dimensional standards, it's either, you're going to make some that were previously conforming with the ordinance, you're going to make them non-conforming anymore, and so they're legal and they're allowed to be non-conforming, and they're allowed to, to continue, but, you know, when they want to change something, when they want, you know, if, you know, God forbid that a house or a building burns down or something, then they can't put it back unless it complies with the ordinance, and so then, you know, you're, they're, they're forced to change the layout of, of their building a little bit in those situations, and so again, generally, I, I, I try to avoid, you know, you know, having, having the city, you know, adopt something that would. something that would result in a bunch of properties not complying with the ordinance. Obviously, we want to have as much of them as possible.
And maybe this is a good time before you get into too many details of the language to talk about the man. That's okay?
Yeah.
You can switch over to four. I'm putting up on the screen for you the joint use command. And I'm sorry, it's a fuzzy, it's a PDF document today, I don't know what, but I can walk through a little bit of it. And we had a little bit of this discussion earlier that we really kind of need to sort out. Right now, we're zoned C2 up to Monroe. And then beyond that, there's some industrial here, and then this is basically highway commercial. And we certainly don't want that to be highway commercial, and wouldn't want, you know, that kind of a development in that area. We really want it to be somewhat more like downtown, maybe somewhat more like the mixed use. It's future land use planned as the spread is downtown. That's what it's called, it's just called downtown. I think where the trick comes in, and we might even need to just kind of go parcel by parcel a little bit, where the trick comes in is that we also have the historic district. And we have some of those buildings that are in this area where we're talking about, we're zoning it as mixed use, that maybe we want to go back and look at whether or not they should be C2 and sort of follow along with the rest of the historic district. So it's gonna wrangle through it tonight, but I think it's, it needs to be maybe a little bit of a tedious process to kind of walk through and figure out where we have now. Let's not put them in a situation where we're creating these non-conformities like Andy talks about, but also where it fits in with other things, for example, historic district boundaries. So that's, this area is gonna be a challenge. I think it's gonna be a challenge to walk through, walk through the man, and probably we'll take a whole session in and of itself.
Yeah, and before, you know, I'm available here tonight, I drove down there again to look at everything. And given that easterly block on Main between Jefferson and Jackson, you know, I drove through there again, was getting a little uncomfortable looking at everything, I don't know, because again, there's a lot of single-family in there, a lot of it's set back, a lot more than ten feet off the road on both sides, some of the commercial uses are set back. On the north side of the road, there are a bunch of the commercial buildings are set back, you know, twenty, thirty, forty feet. And, you know, again, I, it's kind of a delicate balance to try and, you know, implement what the plan wants to do and, you know, sort of further that vision and make sure that we're getting where we want to go, but without creating a million non-conformities and a million administrative problems in the process. So again, I would, that particular block is making me a little uncomfortable this afternoon. But again, it's all part of the power station, I think. And again, this is by no means advanced product policy, so we might end up taking somehow putting some other ones in. Mark pointed out that we need to include that block north where the school of this will have that, those public facilities, yeah, and I gotta fix that. I missed that one, which is not a big deal, you know, it's easy to fix. But the other ones, you know, we'll need to make sure that we're, you know, we're getting them partially to what we want, but we're not causing too many headaches for ourselves in the future.
I also had a question about the ten-foot setback. Would that include patios? If you wanted to have a restaurant with a patio, how could you make that, could that work some way?
Yeah, I mean, the, what I have for the maximum ten-foot setback would be from the front coffee line to the building. So they have like a porch, you know, that could approach within that ten feet, but if they set their building back twenty feet, you know, typically things like porches and canopies and audiences and all that aren't counted in the setback. So the building itself, the main part of the building itself couldn't be more than ten feet back. So I think that can work if there's like a cafe or a coffee shop or something that wants to have some outdoor seating, it would give them the space to do so without obstructing the sidewalk necessarily. But that's certainly something to look at, some of that, I think, outdoor seating and those type of issues.
Because I think that makes, that's very walkable. Other thoughts, questions? Under sixteen eighty oh two, the J, multiple family, that must be like an apartment building, right? Not just a three-family dwelling. I mean, I know it addresses two families under special land uses.
Yeah, that's the intent. I mean, usually the, I think your definition for a multiple family dwelling is something that's designed for and occupied by three or more families. So yeah, that's getting added. Could be like townhouses or row houses, they kind of attach to them. It could be apartments, condos, you know, you name it. It could be the one small building that's three or four stories that has six units in it. It could be one, you know, long series of buildings, it's just some form of attached housing, it's got three or more units in it.
Are we voting on this? Or are we just reviewing?
Just reviewing. We're moving a couple of meetings away from that end.
There.
Is there a chance we can just do smaller sections instead of doing all at once?
Yes.
Just do this property first and wait for down to Main Street? Or should we do it all yet?
Or just cut off the uncomfortable block?
Andy can speak to that. I mean, my, I would think that as you're walking through that process, even though we're looking at one section or one parcel that we know we want to have set up for mixed use, you should also be thinking about the other areas, whether you're rezoning right away or not, you know, I'd like to be thinking about them. And sometimes it's better to just include them all at the same time.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we could do as much or as little as you guys are comfortable with. You know, I don't want to do too much, you know, such that slows the process down. And it takes us, you know, month after month after month to get it right. At the same time, you know, when I started looking into this and solved that stuff, east of where we are now on Main Street, it's entirely commercial, as a planner, it kind of gave me a little sense of urgency to get that changed into something that fits better with downtown. So that easterly block, you know, we can certainly take that out if you guys wanted to address a bit. Yeah, it certainly gets all up for debate at this point. I would like to get as much done as we can within reason. But again, I don't want to, you know, slow anything down to a pace where that it's, you know, a year or even actually effective.
Thank you.
What are your thoughts on how to proceed?
Well, the main non-conforming is probably like between Jackson and Jefferson.
Most likely. I mean, there might be a couple.
Yeah, the next.
Yeah, you know, on Avery or something, maybe even on Kent. But the ones that really jumped out at me, whether it be, yeah, was between Jackson and Jefferson. There might be a couple others. In some ways, each block has its own issues too, because you take, you take this block across the street here, and it's actually currently is owned industrial. The one, there's one use that still is industrial, maybe light industrial, but it still is industrial. And then the other is being discussed as mixed use, so, you know, this, it may fit within this, but you still have that one sort of industrial, I would call it, light industrial property. To turn it into mixed use all of a sudden, they're definitely non-conforming. Yet, the property right next door, it probably makes sense to have mixed use, because I think that's where building owners are heading, and it makes sense for that property. So each block, I think, has its own unique challenges to, or unique discussion to walk through in the block here with City Hall and buildings next to City Hall. Maybe are more of a C2 type area than a mixed-use area, and maybe that's more of a discussion that we should have for this block here. Yeah, I mean, another thing that we can do instead of zoning some of the things on Main Street as mixed use is we can also zone them C2. That would have, you know, it's got the same requirements as what the rest of downtown does over to the west, which also has the zero, you know, the zero setback requirement. It doesn't have the, you know, some of the more strict transparency requirements and things like that in it. But it certainly lends itself better to the type of development that we all want to see there than C3 does. And so I think if, you know, maybe we don't go mixed use there, maybe we go C2, but going from C3 to C2 is definitely a step in the right direction.
Well, that raises another issue. Should we, should we be exploring some of those transparency and some of those other issues in our C2 district?
I think so. And I think, you know, we'll be starting the downtown master plan soon. And I think that will be a large part of that conversation, you know, towards the end of that project, you know, once, you know, once we get some of the initial studies, time to say, okay, where do we go from here? You know, what are our recommendations to really, you know, bring things to the next level? What do we need to do to get to where we want to go? And I think adopting some of those standards in C2 and in other places of the city here is most likely going to be something that comes out that, I mean, something that I personally as a planner want to see, and I'm probably not alone either.
Well, it certainly would resolve some issues than I have, because didn't we look at Jim Regan's building with the apartment above that as a special use or...
Yes.
And aren't we really looking at that same kind of scenario in the block over here or...
Yes.
The entirety of the two-hundred block either way, so maybe we can just change some of the criteria in C2, or make it mixed use. I don't know. We need to talk more.
Yeah, we wanted to think it through. I, you know, my thought is, is that maybe we do need to push C2 a little bit more than think about where that applies, but then still continue down this mixed-use route. Because, again, I'm thinking historic district versus, I'll call it downtown edge, you know, outside of the historic district, or even the edge of the historic district. But, you know, that may have a little bit of a different flavor to it, maybe not too different. So maybe, maybe we need to walk through both discussions, kind of look at C2 a little bit, reduce C2 a little bit, and also continue to develop this mixed-use section. I'm just throwing that out there.
There's things about the mixed use that I particularly like in terms of the glass and walkability that isn't addressed on the current C2 thing. So I don't know, because if, I don't get the nuance, but it matters if we change the C2 rules or implement mixed use. But I think I want to make it easier, but I want it to be better looking. Right. Encouraging, make it easier for people to do what we want them to do.
Right. As long as they do what we want.
That's right. Do it our way, just like it's their idea.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion about that?
Do you have enough for us to help with the game plan?
I think so. I mean, it feels like we're, you know, we're getting there a little bit on the, as far as the regulatory language and the, you know, the uses and the transparency and some of that stuff. And I think what sounded like a bigger question mark is, okay, where exactly is going to be mixed use, or are we talking about expanding C2? So I'm thinking next month what I'll probably do is, you know, do a little more, you know, GIS work and some mapping work, and, you know, play with some different scenarios to bring back here to really, you know, maybe we could study a bit more what's on the ground, what's there now, and, you know, make some more informed decisions about which way we go, you know, maybe we, maybe if you get a change to mixed use, and maybe we expand C2 a little bit, you know, everything, like anything is possible.
We should take a walk through town and do it.
It'd be nice though.
Field trip.
Yeah, a walk is not a bad idea.
It's not that very far.
No.
Yeah, I gotta drive the car to the point.
You're okay? Good. Thank you. Mark, do you have anything for us to add here for?
I don't. The permits are in your package, and I hope you have anything to hand.
Moving on to commissioner remarks then, or are you ready to move on? Jim?
Oh, the only thing I have is just a comment about North Country Trails. They put out a video that is available on, I suppose YouTube, but...
It's on Hall Two, isn't it?
It is. Oh, I think everybody should look at it. Very well done, but gives Law some excellent exposure. And if Mark could post that on the city site...
That is on the Jim Hall to-do list.
Thank you.
This is very nice video. I love it.
I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it yet.
Well, you should, because that showboat, it's got this wall out here with the...
Oh, it's got the North Country Trail picture and everything around there. Looks pretty good.
A lot of good things about Law. When you get depressed and you really wonder what our future is, this is a good reference to say, hey, we are making progress. Thanks.
Dave?
I'm good. No remarks?
Nothing for me? Thank you. I would accept that. Can you second that?
I will second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Abstained? Did I get it right? The time is now seven forty-eight. Meeting adjourned.